...excused and Commissioner Zess is here in this place. Uh, we work on a split meeting format. Tonight is our informational meeting. So what we do is we will, uh, ask the applicant to come up, give us a little bit of background, what they're looking for. We, uh, the commissioners will ask questions and then a small discussion amongst ourselves. Then we open it up to the audience. We ask that anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the proposal come up. Anybody would like to speak against the proposal? And then if necessary, the applicant could have a short rebuttal if we feel it's necessary. Uh, we then adjourn for two weeks. Do any further research we feel we have to do. Come back in two weeks and make our decision. That being said, that's not by, uh, ordinance. So we do not have to that. If it is a clear, straightforward, um, application that we feel we can, uh, act on tonight, we will act on it tonight. First item on the agenda is to review and approve the, uh, minutes from March 2nd meeting. And if you see issues with, uh, the minutes for March 2nd. We'll approve those minutes. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I think so.
If there's a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a conditional use request. W-1762 South Shore Drive, East Troy. Parcel number PCT-00001. Steve Menza, owner, town good, Golden Treaty, landscape applicant. Someone here could just give us a little background?
Yeah, we're applying for the conditional use permits for Menza for doing a shoreline buffer. And we're also looking at the DNR forward repairing the frostshee and putting in riprap along that shoreline. He owns about twenty-five hundred feet of shoreline. And we're only working on like eleven hundred to twelve hundred feet of that where it needs to be repaired. The other twelve hundred he's just gonna leave alone because there's nothing to really fix on that section.
Sure.
So, but I think that county is looking for conditional use because of the length of it. Usually we can get county permits for what I'm doing like-
Even in a high water setback without conditional use?
Right. Exactly. But because it's so long, we're going in past like, I think it's six, eight, nine hundred feet. When you start getting these longer shorelines, then I guess like how many said you gotta do conditional use permit.
Okay.
And then any tree removal we're doing, the trees are clearly marked out there. I don't know if anybody went out there to take a look at it. There's some trees in the frostshee that have to come out because we gotta cut the frostshe down. And then like I said, we're, he doesn't have to plant the whole shoreline, but we're gonna go ahead and plant the whole shoreline buffer. They try to help restore a shoreline.
Any questions of the applicant? Um, yeah, we just tabled the last time. Who's really here to answer any questions if we had any?
Yeah.
Um, but if there are any questions, I'll have them. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, again, we've kinda already taken a look at this. It's, there was one person even at the last meeting that spoke in favor of it, that it's deteriorating, it's something that needs to be done. And they're commended that they're going to the expense of taking care of it, so. Any other discussion amongst commissioners or questions?
We're planning, this is a selection. You know, that we're referring to, so it's not-
I- Go ahead.
I concur that, uh, I did go out there and I did go down this long peninsula is where it is, I guess. And, uh, the shoreline is heaving and it does seem an dire straits of attention. So the riprap, from my perspective, uh, seems very well needed. And because of the fact that, um, oh, they're following very, almost, they're just following everything. They're doing it correctly with that asking plan. It seems as though they're doing just what the county would be requesting. And, uh, it just seems like they're doing the right thing.
Thanks. Any other discussion amongst commissioners? Would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? Okay, this one's pretty straightforward here.
No.
So, I'm sorry. If you could just say your name and, uh, and address for the record.
Oh, it's N-9234 South Shore Drive.
One second, did you get that?
N-9234.
Okay.
We received a notice of the DNR's, uh, of, of the riprap project as we're landowners adjacent to this. And the DNR, uh, was giving us an opportunity until the end of mid-April, left or April, to review it and see if we wanna make any objections. And my question is, uh, should a conditional use permit be granted at this time until, uh, the DNR has made its ruling? And also the DNR said that at this point, they, uh, looked at the proposal and it was approved with conditions. And I just got the proposal yesterday or the day before. And I haven't even read all the details of it. Uh, so I don't know what those conditions are.
So I guess, and you, Mr. Good, you can tell me if I'm online, but the DNR is kinda more the specific, you know, plant type and the details and their conditional use. Usually any approval has a conditional use, like, okay, it's approved by use, uh, number four riprap or use a limestone riprap or something like that. If, Mr. Good, if you have more detail to that.
Yes, and we're actually running two separate permits. The, the riprap is separate DNR than what the conditional use is. Conditional use is county, which is mostly for the planting. Any tree removal, bucket removal and planting, that is what the conditional use is for. The DNR is completely separate for riprap. It's a different, it's a different, um, permit that we're running through. And then like you say, we're supposed to send a letter out for like thirty days, has to get posted. So that way the two major repairers know what's going on. And we do have a meeting with them on Friday, but they did cancel it. They wanna see what the whole, they wanna do an onsite evaluation, the wildlife fish habitat and all that. They wanna do a habit to see if everything looks like the way it should be going on.
Sure, thank you. So if we were, if we were to grant them a conditional use, they still have to go through DNR approval? So those are separate concurrent approvals? I don't know if that helps or answers your question or does that do any easier?
Don't know. And so we're through the proposal, but as long as it's not final, um, at this point.
And if the DNR is asking you for feedback in thirty days, they, they will not give their approval for thirty days. And if we give them conditional use, they're not gonna start without DNR approval. Anybody else in the audience like to speak on that? Okay, thank you. Um, again, I, I think this is a little bit of a good design out tonight. Anybody want to come up?
Yes, uh, I move that we approve the conditional use, uh, for, for the, uh, the address is eighty fifty-one Congress Avenue. Oh, no, that's how I looked at it.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. We should request for parcel number PCT-00001, uh, W-1762 South Shore Drive in East Troy.
We have a motion to approve the conditional use. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Pick one. We have a second, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is conditional use at N-9080 County Road ES. Parcel PET one zero 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 eight A, SB Towers. You can just give us a little-
Oh, yeah, good afternoon. Um, yeah, so, I'm for SB Towers. Um, our client Dish is looking to install the proposed and has three, uh, sector mounts and, uh, six radio, uh, radio units. Uh, basically it's just to, uh, improve the service here. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it, just self-site service. SB owns a tower and their client's just looking to install it.
Any questions for the applicant?
I would call my oldies today, is this gonna improve my reception?
Uh, it could, it could potentially, yes, yes. We, you don't know exactly when they're gonna turn it on or when the structure's finished. I mean, if they get approved, um, they have to be around it on their, you know, uh, on their end. But yeah, it could potentially do, yes. How far? I'm sorry, I'm five miles. Okay, then, yes. Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
It's just gonna extend the height or anything?
No, no, it does not extend the height of the tower.
Thank you.
Just puts more stuff on it.
Yeah, we had one of these time too long ago, but anything that put any other thing on the tower comes back to us for conditional use. Um, I think the last one was ATNT here, whoever it was. But same thing, they're just putting more things up.
Just to carry this question, how long has the tower been there?
You know what, I'm actually not sure. Um, this isn't, uh, my particular project. And I came here from, uh, one of my colleagues who's like six hours away. I'm two hours away from here, so. So, um, I'm not exactly sure how long the tower has been there, but I can definitely ask and circle back and get that information tomorrow. Just to carry this question. I guess I'm more like the longevity of something like this. Okay.
Thank you. You can ask. Any discussion amongst commissioners of, of the issue? All right, I'd open it up to the audience. Would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal?
Do you need my names?
Please.
John Stoves, one of the, their one, Strickland Road. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, are they putting up new equipment on the tower?
Yes.
And what type of equipment is it gonna be? Is it gonna be four G, five G? Um, any of that listed in here?
It's just about electric cabinets, equipment.
So they don't say what type of equipment they're on or you just say they're putting new equipment up there?
It's, uh, MD four, HPA three-three-RVU.
Can we ask who that stuff is? If this is gonna be four G, uh, five G or?
We'll wait till we get any other, uh, piece of that.
All right, um. And this is new stuff or is it replacement on behalf?
I believe it's new.
New? And do they mention what carrier network it's for?
Dish.
Dish? Okay, all right, thank you, more questions?
Anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Anybody like to speak against? I've probably already said it. Any, anybody else like to speak on this proposal at all? Do you have any more technical?
Yeah, I, I believe it's five G. I can circle back with my colleague tomorrow, um, since he's, um, in charge of this project. Um, but yeah, I can circle back tomorrow.
Are there any residences near it?
Um, I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, again, as far as I'm concerned, this is technology moving forward. It's upgrading the three new antennas on, on the existing tower. Doesn't affect the airport. I know we had some concerns about that last time, the airport, um, so forth, so. What's that?
Did we ask one, two, or three?
What does it think to be turned on?
I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it would, I would have to discuss this with the client. The client, the client would know best. They have to figure out the construction, the timelines, the equipment, when it's gonna be ready.
He's adding a better service apparently.
Yeah, I know. I, I wish I had all this information, but unfortunately there's so many delays in the equipment. I, I wish I could get that answer to you.
Um, to mean, to be straightforward, unless anybody feels we shouldn't act on this tonight, I think we could, uh, take a motion.
There's nobody objecting to it. There's an idea of how it being disruptive to the neighbors.
And we've had a precedent where we've approved this same situation before for a different service.
Yeah, there's only one real precedent against Tana Chio's home. Other than that, I mean, on the east side is the freeway and then on the west side is the highway ES. I don't know, just there's the whole residential building, you're closing in here. It seems pretty, just an upgrade. It seems to have a benefit to the community.
You make that motion?
I make a motion that-
Yes, I am.
I make a motion that we accept the conditional use permit requested from Dish Wireless, um, at address North ninety-eighty County Road Highway ES. Um, tax key number ET dash ten dash AA.
Uh, so we have a motion to approve the, uh, conditional use. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a variance request at N-8568 Stringers Bridge Road. Parcel number PA one six zero six zero 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 two. Tim and Barbara Behrens. Okay, please.
Uh, my name's Bart Behrens. Tim's in my address. In St. eighty-five sixty-eight Stringers Bridge Road. Um, a letter from Darren at County Zoning that's included in the document requires us to apply for a new eight-foot variance from the planning permission for existing six-foot fence. Um, I don't know if you wanna turn to the pages that we included. Uh, page one is the variance approval for May two thousand twenty for our six-foot privacy fence. Until this meeting, we've only applied for one variance for this six-foot fence. A resident at the March Town Board meeting that Tim and I applied for, they were denied a seven-foot variance. Page two is self-explanatory. We want to hide as much of our neighbor's junk as possible. A privacy fence was helpful in that objective. Page three shows our contract with Home Depot for a six-foot fence to be professionally installed with the level installation option, not the following flow or stepped options. Page four shows the finished project. Our level fence on our level north property line. Is our north property line a hundred percent level without so much as an inch or two of deviation? No, it is not. You can see that it's run to roof level. Page five is the official letter from Darren letting us know our fence is nine to ten inches too tall and that we raised fence panels by several inches. Page six shows, after removing some of the junk shown on page two that was laying on our property, ground cover and dirt were also removed with the neighbor's bobcat bucket from our side of the survey markers and Carl's side. Page six shows the end result of this land disturbance. Tim did go out with our tiller to work up the soil and level it as best he could. To the naked eye, it looked relatively level. Not till the fence was installed did we see it wasn't as level as we thought in this land disturbance area. Darren said we were not allowed to add dirt and sand to this area to make it more level and keep it level for us for mowing. Page seven, after receiving Darren's letter, Tim went out to measure the land disturbance area from the bottom of the fence panel to the ground. Tim's measurement shows a seven-inch gap. Page eight has multiple curvices. It shows our fence is still level, level from start to finish. No panels were raised. A level installation means the raising or lowering of panels is not required. Page eight also shows three of the commercial shipping containers in Carl's backyard are level. Utility poles laying on top of these shipping containers, most of them covered in snow, are not rolling off. It's all a relatively level area near our fence. This photo also proves Tim and I were one hundred percent wrong to settle for a six-foot fence. A twelve-foot fence would have been a better choice to hide all of this. This small portion of our neighbor's backyard providing other portions of her property are why we receive page nine, a devaluation of our property by twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. We thought a privacy fence hiding her property from ours would improve our property, yet did not. We did not know our May two thousand twenty variance approval would be given the evening we applied for it. When Tim and I debated about the months it would take to get the town's approval, making the deadline to get on the county's agenda, eventually getting their approval to have all the official paperwork to get on Home Depot's waiting list, we decided to settle for a six-foot fence instead of an eight-foot fence. Our fence posts are one inch taller than the six-foot panels. Darren said the posts can only be six foot tall. A bevel cap on each post top for moisture runoff is also one inch tall. That puts us at six feet, two inches. Add to Tim's seven-inch measurement shown on page seven puts us at six feet, nine inches. The professional fence installers said they do not install fence panels directly on the ground. It causes them to rot. There would be areas where small gaps would be present and to be get to the land disturbance area. An eight-foot variance from your planning permission will give us a one-foot, three-inch buffer in case there is more land disturbance on our neighbor's property. If the neighbor removes more than that buffer amount, I guess we'll receive another letter from county telling us our fence is too tall and Tim and I will be back here to request another variance for you. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for the, if you don't mind, before you, or if you do oversee. Did you have something else to say?
Just to add and to give you a little more history of our property. Uh, we bought our property in nineteen ninety-one. After serving eight and a half years overseas and then working another four and a half years in Washington DC, we had an opportunity to come back here to the Midwest. We're both from small towns in Iowa. I grew up in a dairy farm up by Marshville. And we wanted a little breathing room. We saw this property. It was attractive because it has a Girl Scout property across the road that would be posted on. These lots were broken into five and a half acre lots and zoning C two nature of land conservancy. So that looked attractive to us. The only one we could get was this five acre lot that we're on, five and a half acres. It was a dirt deal in nineteen ninety-one. It took us thirty years, half of our adult lives, thirty years, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we spent our blood, sweat and tears reporting to this property. We planted over four hundred and fifty trees, as did the girls next door, Janie, Kathy. They did same thing, everybody did, following the rules. All the way up to Barney Bong and the bottom. But, of course, in two thousand and three, Carl bought his property and they proceeded to create a junkyard, slant salvage yard, slant contractor storage yard, which they have openly admitted. They both said it was for, when the inspection was being done, Carl said, this is for junk businesses. And Johnny said, this is for our businesses. Just not too long ago, Carl had cornered John Becker, tried to explain him and say, well, we have eighteen properties and, and we need this. We have all of our businesses. We have to keep our business, our equipment out here, maintain our businesses. We did not buy our property next to a junkyard, next to an industrial park, inter-industrial park. We just, you know, our heart problem. We had no intentions of ever putting up a fence. Like you can see what, you know, what we ran into. And this is the only answer. If they say you did, we appreciate the variance, uh, girlfriend. Thank you.
Um, do we, do we have, is there any questions for the applicant?
There is a reference in the, um, note from Darren that some of the fence is over the property line. So I just wondered what, is that the case?
Yeah, no. I had the property surveyed twice by, uh, B-two-G, Mike, that, uh, B-two-G. I had it surveyed twice because I knew there would be a problem. I have survey stakes put in every one hundred feet. And when they came and did the fence, their professional crew, I was there the whole time. They used a Mason line the whole time they're putting up the fence. I was there the entire time. Our fence is not on their property.
The fence was just, they ran the Mason line from each of that survey markers placed every one hundred feet. The southern part of the line was on the south side of the survey markers and the fence was installed on the south side of the Mason line.
And we are having a survey, Mike, every screw. Come back one more time to put this, locate the fence, put it on the supply and put this through us, which is again costing us more money. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All we do dumb.
Oh, uh, by the way, Darren had no one, no, should not have even said that. When I went to confront him, he said, oh, well, we don't know, we don't get involved. We don't know we get involved with that, that between you and your neighbors. You don't get involved? You just threatened me with a six hundred and thirty-eight dollar fine.
Six hundred and sixty-three dollars per day.
Did you have something there?
Well, I wonder why he didn't do that? He could see, um-
All you had to do is call him. I told him, you could have called him. I can show you the property, the line, the property state. I could have showed him.
And to be honest, if we're, if we're discussing a variance for height today, that if you put a fence on someone else's property, that's kind of a different matter. Right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. All right, discussion amongst commissioners. So we saw this about a year ago. And variation in grade. And so I don't know that there's any discussion amongst commissioners unless anybody has any questions or-
Why don't we get the chance tomorrow?
Um, I believe that's, well, the, the one picture in here does show grass with the nine inches underneath.
Seven inches.
Sorry, seven inches, my apologies.
And the, the picture that was taken from the land disturbance, that was a twenty-twenty picture that Tim took of this year, twenty twenty-two.
So basically, like she mentioned, we'd be giving her a buffer, right? Ups and downs and grades.
We're not adding to our fence. They will remain at six feet, two inches. But the, the difference between the bottom of the fence panels and the ground, there are areas you can just slip your hand underneath. There are areas where there might be an inch or two of daylight underneath. But then of course, the rear of the fence where there was land disturbance, it is seven inches. That puts us nine inches over with the one-inch overage of our post and the one-inch overage of the bevel cap that's on top of the post for the moisture runoff. We are six feet, nine inches. We're only allowed to be at six feet.
Which Tim measurements in different areas. Yeah, how the, the fence looks, what?
It is level.
It is. So you can't go beyond that, right? Seems, it seems, I mean, probably some areas.
Absolutely. If you go, if you go to a dealer and buy a commercial fence for six feet, it's definitely a no. You wonder they're doing.
Exactly. I mean, God forbid that the people, well, it wasn't the local people, but the contractors given more than we even asked for, a, a better product. I mean, they listen to their customers. They give us a beautiful fence, which shouldn't have been necessary in the first place, but yeah. They put the cap on to keep the post from rotting.
And they did not place the panels on the ground so that it was exactly six feet because it will rot the panels for, so.
Any other discussion amongst commissioners before I open it up to the audience? Would anybody in the, uh, audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal?
All right, I'd like to show you some pictures of what's actually there. Um, it's very well documented. I'll come around and I'll show you that. This is the actual fence right here. That's the actual four or five inch gap on the bottom. You can zoom in on the measurement there. You can clearly see it's eighty-one inches tall. Um, the county ordinance states that no portion of the fence be higher than six feet.
We understand that. And it's six foot nine. That's what David admitted.
Right. And the town ordinance states that, uh, you can have a fence up to the property line, but not touching the property line or over the property line.
We're not here to discuss the location of the fence, it's just the variance and the height.
Okay. So, um, if the ord, does the town ordinance supersede the county ordinance? Yes, or does the county ordinance supersede the town ordinance on the height?
Uh, the town ordinance, I would say. I, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. Well, if the town, or the county ordinance states that no portion of the fence, so that's regardless of irregularities on levelness or unlevelness.
We've established a, it's higher than six feet tall. I don't know if we have to rehash that.
Okay. Now, the applicant did come and ask for a seven-foot fence and he was denied, I think in two thousand nineteen-ish. I don't remember the exact month and date, but he was denied that variance. So he went to-
Not from us.
From the town board, he did.
No.
No.
I saw that.
I was at the meeting.
It would come to us before it would go. We never saw it.
He got denied the variance. It's on YouTube. If you look at the video, you'll find. But anyway, I'm not gonna debate it, but he asked for a seven-foot tall fence. He said, no, the most you can get is six foot. And then he put up a six foot ten fence. So I'm, am I missing something here or when you say?
We've already established it's six foot nine. We don't have to rehash it. He's asking us if we, if we'd be okay with an eight-foot tall fence. I, I, my question to you is, why are you so concerned about this nine inches taller?
Because if somebody else around this area wants to set a precedent and start putting up higher fences, why would we have ordinances now? Just take the ordinance away and let anyone put up what they want?
Or you have to come to, to us and explain their, their reasons for them to get a variance.
Okay, but you can't create your own hardship. A hardship is if you got a, a certain set of parameters there that are naturally occurring, but put- Hardships, if you got a, a certain set of parameters there that are naturally occurring, but putting your own fence up and creating your own hardship, that's kind of not legit.
I saw the hardship, so.
You see a hardship?
I absolutely see a hardship.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like, think you guys could propose? All right.
Oh, I have, I have.
Absolutely, if you can give your name and address, please.
Um, Carla Georgie, north eighty-five-nine Strangers Bridge Road.
I just want to, uh, put on record that I'm requesting that Mr. Kesselham be taking off on the decision, discussion because there's a lot of, um, bias going on. Um, there was an article written in the newspaper, uh, about the whole situation with the fence and things. And right here, it's, um, all stated that everything is, is in compliance as far as the county goes. So I would just like to request that, um, please take off on, on any, um, decision with this because there's been a lot going on and a lot more depending, depending on, um, my property, so I'm requesting that.
Sure, so I'm gonna deny that because I talked with Jim Mills and, uh, and we've decided that there's not a conflict of interest and, uh, an elected official has to recuse himself when they are directly involved in the matter, but on this board, he's not an elected official, he's an appointed official.
Okay, and again, I'm just requesting, as John said, that, um, I, I saw the, uh, original, uh, document that ran in for the, the original request and there was written right on there, I'm requesting a seven-foot fence in order not to look at my junk or the junk next door. So it is on file here at the town, and so that originally was, um, done. And my view on this is that just because, um, he got, it was like, he got denied, but he still did what he wanted to do and he put up a seven, almost a seven-foot fence. So I really think that's unfair for the community to sit there and, um, allow somebody to get a seven-foot fence up where you drive around and there's other situations where other properties, people don't want to look at, um, other things on the properties that may not, uh, coincide to where they want to live. So I just think that's totally unfair and I don't think it's going to, um, help the community allow one person to get a seven-foot fence up. I mean, I just think it's, it's ridiculous, especially when, if you approve the height, we are planning on going to civil court, I know you're not worried about where it's sitting or whatever, but we have a lot of documentation that, uh, everything that includes on a fence, everything on a fence down to the footings and their footings are at least five inches over onto our property. So I plan on taking this to court and fighting it, so if they want to lower, if they don't lower, they're gonna, more than likely be moving it because I am gonna take this further, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Cook, can I ask you a question?
Give me one second. Does anybody else in the audience has to speak on this proposal? All right, if you guys would like a small rebuttal, please.
When we first came before you to apply for only variance, um, we planned on asking for an eight-foot variance and when we came up to speak, um, when I came up to speak, we said we were asking for a six-foot variance and you looked to the people beside you and said, I guess, they changed it to a six-foot variance instead of eight feet, do you remember that, my friend?
Not necessarily, but I believe.
We have the letter approving the variance and the building permit.
All right, um, again, this is something that, that we approved in my mind, and I'm, I'm only one vote on this board. I think it's refreshing to know it's level, there's some variations in grade, I think it's neighbor's shooting. If we think, I don't know if, you know, adjourning for two weeks, doing the look at the fence and seeing the ups and downs, if you guys want to do that, by all means, although I, I, I feel like I could act on it tonight, but, uh, again, I just, that's just my opinion. So, any other feedback? No feedback, then I'd, I'd take a motion.
I will, I will, I'm gonna get request, I would like to move that we approve the variance for, um, Timothy and Barbara Barrens on north eighty-five-six-eight, uh, Strangers Bridge Road, uh, tax key number PA one-six-zero-zero-zero-two.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll do that, right.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a variance request at N nine-one-five-zero Humphrey Lane. Uh, parcel number PBM zero-zero-zero-zero-nine, Pete, excuse me, Pete and Carol Russell.
My name is Attorney Dale Thorpe, I'm here tonight with John and Carol Russell. Uh, we're also, uh, in attendance are the neighbors to the south, regarding this request, Mr. and Mrs. Miller. Uh, we're here tonight to talk about, um, their request for a six point five-nine, about six and a half foot variance, so it's called construction of the deck. I'm gonna, we filed a detailed application, we filed tons of paperwork with the county, I won't go through all of that again, I'll just explain some of the general terms of circumstance of how we ended up here. Uh, the property has been the subject of short yard averaging, come up with a consistent setback, uh, over the years. Uh, before Mr. and Mrs. Russell bought the property a couple of years ago, they went to the county, my assistance, we got a letter from Darren stating what the short yard averaging would be. Darren stated that there's a note in the file that it would be fifty-three point eight feet. Uh, pursuant to a note made by a prior zoning administrator, which is apparently how they do it, is they write it on a note, they write it on the survey and put it in the file for people to find years later, fifty-three point eight. Uh, so, so between the year two thousand, when it was calculated at fifty-three point eight, in the year two thousand twenty, not much changed out there, these properties are identical, the structures are located in the same place, the, the blocks of property ownership have not changed, there hasn't been any infill that took place, no redevelopment took place, it's the same neighborhood essentially. Um, when the permit was applied for, for the deck, Darren came back again with another letter and that is included in the application that we gave you indicating upon additional consideration, the short yard averaging should be sixty-two point five-six feet. Uh, we are asking for not the fifty-three point eight, they're applied for a fifty-five point nine-seven foot setback, six point five-nine feet of this much of a variance pulled out of the deck to take place. Uh, what we have, ha, here is a question of interpretation. The, the idea of short yard averaging is not, you've probably heard of it before, it's been around for seventy-five years. In the statutes, a one form or another, the reasoning behind it is exactly the same then as it is now. To preserve the character and consistency in neighborhoods, to recognize that one neighborhood might be different than another, averaging setbacks between structures on each side of permit. One thing changed in the last twenty years, so there was a statute adopted in two thousand fifteen which reads very much the same, it resulted in a code change that the county talks about averaging structures on each side, and it's almost identically. They introduced the word lot, however, instead of saying structures on each side alone, structures on a lot on each side. Doesn't seem like a big deal, in fact, we went so far as to go to the state and dig up all the legislative history. It's pretty dry stuff, but if you read the, the committee notes and what they were thinking about, they're talking about structures on each side, houses on each side, character of neighborhood, reserve consistency among setbacks. But when it came down the line, made it into the statute and then into the local ordinance, the word lot suddenly took on a lot more meaning. As I said before, the houses on each side have not changed, these are the same houses, they haven't moved. They have, they're not bigger, they're not, they're essentially identical to neighborhood from two thousand, when the first letter was written. Very high-tech demonstration device here. They chose the same three properties, they're colored because the block of ownership is.